If I could have everybody's attention, I'd like to call the April 9th, 2024 Work Session of the Board of Education to order. Before us, we have an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Lindsay. All in favor? unanimous. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody. We're glad you're all here. You look so happy to be here. If you could all rise, we'll have to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first, we have presentation and discussion items. Supporting English learners in Forsyth County schools with Dr. LeAnn Ross. I remembered.
I'm still not used to hearing that. It's very nice, though. Well, we are thrilled to be here to share with you some of the work that we're doing. I have an amazing team and am so grateful to the board for supporting the work that we do with our English learners. I've got with me Katie Carlson, who's our Coordinator of Academic Services. She oversees our ESOL program. Diana Delaney is our Newcomer Specialist. She focuses specifically on our students who are new to the country and how do we support their needs. And I have three English learner coaches. I have Michelle Slaton, Michelle Mace, and Amanda Agiri. They spend most of their time in the schools, working directly with teachers, leaders, and students to support their needs. So we're very excited to share with you some of the things that we are doing. The governance goals that we specifically relate to is tying into the learner profile, also how we're using efficient and effective financial planning, especially with our state funding and federal funding through these programs, and then also making our large schools feel smaller. Within the strategic plan, the related goals are specifically looking at student social emotional health, looking at culture, climate, and community, and the learner experience with achievement, growth, and engagement. And so before we start, I want you to take a minute and I want you just to imagine. And imagine you are back in high school. You're a freshman. I know. I know. Tom, you are a freshman in high school. And one of your parents has just gotten the most amazing job, and they are going to pick you up, your whole family up, and they're going to move you to Japan. And you are now going to be a student in a high school in Japan. And all of your instruction, written and oral, is in Japanese. And you don't speak a word of it. You don't read it. You don't understand it. But you are going to have to go into this Japanese high school classroom and learn the content while you're learning the language. And we have many students here in Forsyth County that are experiencing just that. And so we want to take a minute, while you're thinking through that perspective, of helping you see some of the things that we're doing to help our students feel safe, connected, and thriving, even if they don't know English, even if they're brand-new to our country. How do we help them succeed? And again, we want all of our students to feel that safe, connected, thriving. We want them to be safe physically and emotionally. We want them to want to come to school. That's a scary thing, not to speak the language or understand the culture. We want them to have a sense of purpose and for people in the school to know them, know who they are, and help them. And then also make sure that those students have the support they need to grow and be successful.
So I want to tell you a little bit about who we're talking about in our schools right now. We know that we are a multicultural community, but we are also a multilingual community with a lot of students who speak more than one language, whose native language is something we've never heard of before. And so we currently have students who come from 118 different countries of birth, speak 68 different primary home languages, and we have more than 2,000 immigrant students. And we classify immigrant students as students who have been in U.S. schools for less than 36 months. So almost 5% of our students fall under that category, so they look like you and I might look if we went into that Japanese school. If you look at the map, you'll see a general progression of these students across the world. And we are more than just the traditional Forsyth County group of immigrants from Mexico and from India. We now are seeing growth across the world, significant pockets of growth particularly in Southeast Asia, in South America, and then in the area around Turkey, Ukraine, and Russia. We have had significant growth of our English learners in the past five years, from 9.4% to 13.1%. And that growth has been exponential in the past two years because we actually had a decrease during the two and a half years of COVID. So we have just seen it stay steady, drop, and then jump right up. So 4% increase in five years. Our ESOL population is based on students who are new English learners, but also all the way up through their second year of exiting the ESOL program because they still have language to gain in our academic settings. Our primary growth has actually occurred in our high school spaces recently. It used to be that our elementary schools had the largest growth of English learners because they come in, they learn the language very young, and they exit as they get to middle school and high school. But we are now seeing huge populations of students coming as high school students, and even 16, 17, 18, and 19-year-old students with no educational experience in the past five, six, seven years.
Katie, hold on to that slide for a second. I just want to make a point of emphasis. 7,200 students, that's more students than most school systems in the state of Georgia. Just to put that in some perspective, how many students we're serving in this particular demographic.
And when we go to state-level meetings, we actually fall into the category with English learners with DeKalb, Hall, Gwinnett, Cobb. So even though we're much smaller than they are, our demographic population of English learners puts us in a different category. So I want to talk about those high schoolers for just a minute. Think back to that picture in Japan. And now, look at these pictures of our high school students in, here we go, six of our high schools. Our largest percentage of growth right now in high school students is in our North and East cluster. Now, while we have a huge population of English learners at Forsyth Central and at Denmark, they continue to grow. They don't grow at the rate that we are seeing that growth in the North and East cluster. But you will see here a representative of what that learning looks like for all of these students who are engaging not only in an English-speaking classroom, but with most other students in their ESOL classes that don't even speak the same language that they do. So just one quick example before we move on. If you look at Lambert High School, they're up in the top-left corner. That class has seven different native languages in 12, 13 students. And so when you go in that class, you'll see a group of four girls who sit at a table together. None of them speaks the same language, yet they somehow are able to, using their phones, of course, engage in commonalities socially, but then they also have to develop those skills for academic language to help them become successful graduates and productive citizens.
And in order to support our high school students, we offer during the summer two opportunities for them to complete credits and advance. One of them is the international, I call it the International Academy, because they are completing credits, high school credits, in more than one course. Some are taking two classes during the summer. And last year, we had 26 students from 11 different countries. And this year, we're counting, 46, but I know five more are coming down. Because six more. We are increasing the classes that we're offering, and it will help them complete credits. And then they'll be on the right course to graduate on time. The other program is a partnership with UNG, and this is offered for all ESOL, ESOL students. And it is a summer program during the month of June, again, to complete credits, high school credits, but also to experience what college is all about. And it is 100% successful. The students sell it every year for other students, so they complete one class, usually econ or gov, and then the following year, they complete the other one. And they love it. They also like the food. This is a picture from our summer. And this year, we will offer a morning class and an afternoon class because we're also offering math foundations and English, so they can complete the credit because we have so many that have started this spring. So then the summer, it offers an opportunity for them to complete the credit, full-credit high school credit.
We found a need by working in the schools that the teachers needed an easy access to instructional strategies that would support all of their students. So the ESOL team, we worked together, and we curated some high-impact, research-based instructional strategies that the teachers in Forsyth, all teachers in Forsyth could easily access, and we created an ESOL website. You can see here is just a glimpse of our engagement structures page. All of those structures are structures that normally would be found in different books or in different websites the teachers are having to go around. We went through and picked out the ones that have the highest impact in discussion, interaction, and engaging the students, and ultimately increasing their success. On the next slide is an example of what we created for each of those instructional structures for the teachers. So this is, we call it a one-pager. It takes the structure and allows the teacher to know exactly what they need to do. The next teacher action, student actions, actually supports our leaders in the building and allows them to know what that structure would look like in the classroom. Some of these, the students are going to be, like, for example, this one, inside-outside circle, they're up and standing and walking around and rotating. We wanted the leaders to be able to know exactly what they're expecting when they're going in there as well. And then at the bottom, we started collecting examples of all of these instructional strategies, examples in Forsyth County. And so we have some examples there from Silver City and from Midway. We found that the teachers are really excited to have this easy access to these structures, and we've seen a huge increase in the implementation of those in the daily gen ed class.
One of the ways that we also support our teachers is by offering the ESOL endorsement. You can see that over the past five years, we have had 73 teachers go through and become ESOL-certified. Through that, we started out using the Metro RISA program, but we were very fortunate to have built our own Forsyth County endorsement, which is very much focused on job embedded and making these engagement structures come alive and very doable for the teachers and very applicable. As you can see, one of the quotes from one of the candidates, that they see the power in not only for supporting ESOL students, but they see the effective strategies for all of their learners. The other benefit of that is Title III does cover the cost, so this is one of the endorsements that costs our teachers $0 to be able to participate in that, and we're very proud of that fact. Where do I go? Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I'm hitting the wrong button. One of the other things that we do, the structures that Amanda was talking about in our website, we lead teachers through that through some cohort professional learning. You can see pictures of teachers engaged in these, where we model those practices with teachers such as inside-outside circle. And then the cohort day is the day of professional learning, and then they have time to plan and collaborate with others from other schools within their cluster typically, which is really great because then they build a resource of a community who they can then tap into as other thinking partners for that. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay. And this is just an example of one of our elementary cohorts that we're doing with the North United cluster, and you can see how impactful that the cohort has meant for these teachers. This particular quote really talks about how, again, it's benefiting all of her students, not just her ESOLs. So again, building that community of support within the North cluster and the vertical team to support one another.
So this is a child that's doing Rally Coach, which is one of those structures that's listed on the website. And what you find is, in a traditional classroom without using these structures, it's very quiet, the kids are doing independent thinking, and when you put these in place, you can hear in this video, the students thinking out loud and being true-thinking partners with each other. It's very powerful for engagement, but also for achievement. One of the first steps that we do to support our schools is that we pull the data, the access data, and really look at the different domains so that we can personalize our support for each of the schools that we support. We help to empower the leaders to give their staff what they need. This is Casey Martin, who was empowered and re-delivered the professional learning that he did with us to his staff at East Forsyth High School.
Another way that we connect with families is that we offer English classes. This is our second year. We partner with Hola English Language School. They provide the teachers and the materials. And last year, we had two cohorts, one at Central and one at Denmark, that attracted parents from all over, the southern part and then the northern part. And this year, we have four cohorts, one at Desana, Denmark still, and then at the library, the Coming Library, which has been very good during the day, and then still at Central. So it went from two to four. And what is nice is that connection with the families, and it just blossoms into other areas. I'm available if they have other questions, so it is an entry point for them to connect with the schools. And here's some of the pictures from our classes. Our Graciela from Desana is one of the teachers, too.
And so that is our support team. I think, hopefully, you heard some ways. We don't just support the students, but we empower the teachers, we're working with our school leaders, and we're connecting with our families. It's so important that these families moving in feel that sense of support and connection and understand how they can advocate for their students and their families as well. You've got a list of the people you've heard from. In addition to this team, Amy Chang, who's our Director of Federal Programs, oversees the Title III portion of how we support our students. And I do, well, thank you for sharing. I do want to give a special shout-out. Michelle Slaton, come stand with me. Michelle is retiring this year. And when we first started this program, Fonda had the vision of bringing support to teachers. And Susan Norris oversaw our ESOL program in addition to all the assessment in our district. It was a huge task. And so bringing Michelle in as our first instructional coach for the school system was amazing. I personally benefited from her support and her guidance and her expertise when I was the principal at Coming Elementary. Michelle has also started the ESOL endorsement through the Forsyth Teacher Academy, and her vision for supporting teachers has led to where we are now. It's a tremendous legacy that she has provided Forsyth County schools, and you see behind you other people who've been able to join the team and follow her example of how to serve and support our students, our teachers, and our families. And so I would be remiss if I didn't offer just a little extra attention.
You would all be remiss if you wanted to.
We are a power team, and we are so incredibly grateful for your support. You all have approved four additional English learner coaches for us this year. And I want you to think, we have 43 schools that we serve. Those three coaches, Amanda, Michelle, and Michelle, work in 43 schools. And it's great work, but we don't have the capacity to serve everyone we need, especially as you heard Katie talk about the increase of ESOL students that we've had over the last couple of years in particular. And so with those additional four coaches, we'll be able to provide individual people within each vertical team that will provide that continuity, K-12, within those vertical clusters. So we are very grateful for your support, and if you have any questions, we would love to answer them.
There was, what, 7,200? Is that what it said? So now that's just 1,000 per person? Isn't that right?
Yes, Ms. Light.
I'm math. That should be a breeze.
Maybe I should have asked for 10 instead of four.
I say that to point out, I realize what a job it is, and we really do appreciate it's become, you know, when I started this a long time ago, nobody even thought about this, and obviously, it's become a big thing, and it's wonderful that we have such support for those kids, because it would be so scary. You know, when you said that, I was thinking, gosh, how scary would that be? So, thank y'all.
I've seen it. I lived it with my nieces coming back from the mission field in Ecuador. So they had grown up on the mission field, but they were English speakers, kind of Spanish speakers. They were Spanish, and it was pretty bad. And when they came back, they ended up both valedictorians of their class. So I've always been supportive of the DLI program because I know what that does and what it does to the brain. So I can only imagine, this is DLI, you know, on steroids, coming backwards the other way. And so we can only help them in their life because I think it'll help with their brain and their thinking as they come back into an English language as much as it does us going to another language. So I can see the benefit of this.
I just think it's so important for our community to understand the changing demographics. And, you know, we have to meet our students where they are, and they all come to us in different places, and it's up to us to provide the resources and support they need. And it's expensive, to your point, and I so agree with you, LeAnn, how much we appreciate this board being responsive to the needs of our students. So if we're going to maintain our very high academic standing in our state and in our nation, we have to meet our kids where they are in order to move them forward. These kids come to us, they're incredibly bright, they just don't speak the language. And so we have to find a way to get them to learn the language and to transition into our school system and our community. But our community needs to understand how the demographics are rapidly changing and how these numbers are going to continue to increase as we move forward. There's no question about that. And this is...
And I think our students benefit as well.
Oh, no doubt.
Because I work in an international company, and those folks coming in are ESOL students, basically, working with me. And I have to work with them on both culture and climate and everything we're doing in the office. So it prepares them for the future and what they're going to be working in anyway.
That's right. This is the world in which they're going to live and work. There's no doubt about it. And I will echo what you said at the beginning. You have a dynamic team, and we're very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have student calendars update with Mitch Young.
Not nearly as exciting.
I got to talk to Suzie. We got to figure out, set the schedule up a little better. They are the, when you talk about graduation rates, just to pile out, they're the needle movers. That group right there. So, all right. Let's see here. All right, a little calendar cleanup tonight. I've shared this with you guys individually, but wanted to make sure that we do this publicly so we can get the word out that there's some calendar adjustments. You know that we do calendars two years in advance, which means the current calendar that we have right now would be the first calendar that I facilitated. I'm just going to go ahead and put that right out there. And it was, what I'm about to share with you doesn't change any of this, by the way. So I want to put that up there and say that none of the, none of the numbers of days, nothing, nothing has changed in that. This is all about a couple of early release days in an online day. But in any case, when I moved up here and transitioned in the, in the middle of the pandemic, one of the things that had happened during that last year I was in Central, moved up here, is we added an additional early release day for high schools. And then when I got here and worked on this first calendar, which is this year's calendar, another change that we made that first year was we didn't, in the years past, we didn't put on the calendar the early release days for high school. After we got that public feedback that I was here the first year, talked to LSCs and principals and Sarah Taylor, we all decided to go ahead and put that on the calendar so we could see the high school early release days. So no good deed went unpunished. I put those on there, but I failed to realize that we had moved to four early release days instead of three. And it was earlier this year, a high school principal caught it and called me and said, why did we lose a day? And we had a discussion and did a little research and realized that, yeah, that had been moved to, for the last couple of years, had been up four days, and I didn't reflect that in the calendar. So now that will be reflected in the calendar. So if you look at this current school year, the 20th of May will be an additional early release day for high school. I went ahead into next year's calendar and made that same adjustment. The other thing that, while I was working on this, we got the information that the PSAT next year would be facilitated on October 18th. That was an experiment that we did this year, where we did that on an online learning day. It went really well. So while we're on this, we're going to go ahead and adjust that October 18th day as well. So the 25, 26 calendar, we're going to wait and make sure that we got our graduations solidified, as well as the PSAT day. So that'll be the next person's duty, their first calendar duty, will be to clean up the 25, 26. But want to make sure that we have those things in place. But in short, the reason that that fourth early release day became so important is, at a high school, being able to grade final exams for teachers, you basically will have two final exams per day, one on one day and then two each of the following days. It allows teachers, the afternoons then, to do a thorough job of grading those final exams and getting those grades turned around in time. And then we also have some graduation dates that fall during that week, and we need to have staff release to go there. So just in case you get questions about the rationale behind those. Any questions?
So with no objection, we'll just get those cleaned up and changed on our website.
Yep. Okay. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, now we have Kathy Carpenter with a couple of updates to Policy JR student records and JB student attendance.
I've talked with me Ross Lawson. Ross is, in addition to the SIS department, he's really over FERPA and student privacy. So he's going to begin by sharing the JB or JR update.
He does not have rights to that.
Yeah, there it is. Oh. Yeah, that's the one I'm clicking. It is that one?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that okay? Because it's pretty simple. And I think you have it. Yeah.
As a part of my role coming on this academic year, one of the things that I was fortunate to take part in was several different training opportunities with a couple of different consortium groups that we're a part of. One of them focused specifically on FERPA and other student data privacy and student privacy laws. One of the things that was noted in that training that I participated in was that a lot of the times, what we want to make sure that we do is we include all different groups that might need access to student records. And when we compared the guidance that we got from the training to our board policy, JR specifically regarding who we consider to be educational officials or school officials, we did not specifically identify student interns or student teachers. So we wanted to make sure that we were explicit about who would be included in that school official to allow us to share educational records with those folks. The other piece of the puzzle was that we wanted to make sure to clarify what we consider to be legitimate educational interest that has specific meaning in a lot of the different laws, but it's important to double up that language in our policy. So we updated the definition of school official to include student interns, or student teachers and interns, and that may include counseling interns or other folks that are partnering with us here in the school system. And we added the sentence, "A legitimate educational interest is defined by a school official's need to review a student's educational record to fulfill a duty approved by a Forsyth County school principal or county-level department supervisor," just to make sure that we have those two pieces buttoned up in the policy.
And we're also going to add that into our Family Engagement Guide, which goes out to all of our parents, just so they have that clarity in the publications that we do directly to the families as well, so they have that.
So as always, this will sit on the table for 30 days, and then we'll have final approval after that.
Have any questions you can use?
Okay. So the second policy that we have is related to student attendance. It's Policy JB. And what we needed to do is we needed to link Policy JB for attendance to our student admissions policy, which is JBC. And basically, what was happening was we had families who started the school year living in Forsyth County. They had enrolled in our virtual environments either part-time or full-time. And for whatever reason, through the school year, they had moved away. Well, the attendance requirements for our virtual environments are not related to actually physically showing up, like our regular environments. They're related to completing your schoolwork, logging into Canvas, making sure your assignments are done. Well, as the year progressed, and we realized, wait a minute, they really aren't residing in Forsyth County anymore. And I was talking with the families, they're like, but we're meeting the attendance requirements. And I'm like, right, but you're not meeting the requirements for this other policy. So what I wanted to do is link the two policies together with the phrase specifically related to our virtual environment, so the families would have clarity and know you have to also reside in Forsyth County in addition to maintaining good attendance in order to participate in our virtual classes. So that's why the phrase that we've added is, "Who meet enrollment requirements established in board policy JBC school admissions," which is where that enrollment requirement sits. So any questions about that? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That one also will sit for 30 days, and then we'll vote on it. Thanks, guys.
And then we have the policies that we're just going
And then we have the policies that we're just going to go over, right?
Yeah, there are two of them. Well, actually, four. Two of them have recommended changes. Policy BBFA, local school council. It was recommended that we omit that last sentence, which will align with current practice. So if you're okay with that, again, it'll sit 30 days and then you'll vote. I don't think there were any questions. We all talked about that. And then the second one was policy BCBD, board meeting agendas, which basically states more clearly how items can get on an agenda. We talked about that at a previous work session. You all agreed. We've amended the policy to reflect that discussion. And again, that'll sit for 30 days, and then you'll formally vote.
Yeah, that's good. It simplified it, too.
Yes, it did. And then the two that we were, again, as we decided at our retreat in January, we'd go through the entire policy manual and review publicly to make sure we did not have any changes we needed to make, or if we did need to make them, we would amend those policies. The first one is around executive sessions, policy BCBK, which was originally adopted in October of 2012. Again, this policy aligns with current state statute. I would not recommend any changes, but again, we're reviewing each one. Wanted to make sure you had a chance to comment on this policy if you wanted to. We good?
I'm good, yeah.
And same is true with Board Code of Ethics. This one was reviewed back in May of 2017, and we made some significant changes to that policy at that time. And once again, this current policy reflects current board action. And unless there's any recommended changes, I would suggest we keep it the same.
And it's also aligned with
It is. It aligns with state statute as well. And as well as GSBA governance regulations as well. Good with those? Okay.
Does anybody have future agenda items? Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and advice from legal counsel?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by a Lindsay. All in favor? Unanimous.